You're watching the Basin PBS Midland City Council Debate at Large Seats Debate, live from the Anwar Family Studio. Brought to you in part by All American Chevrolet of Midland and League of Women Voters of Midland.
Good evening and welcome to Basin PBS. We are coming to you live from the Anwar Family Studios. I'm John Friscutti, a member of the Basin PBS Board, and on behalf of the Board, want to thank you for joining us tonight as we are honored to be hosting the 2021 Midland City Council at-large debates. Basin PBS is known for its quality programming, where we provide not only education but entertainment too. Tonight's program is an accumulation of our mission to educate and inform. Now, I'd like to hand it over to fellow PBS Board Member and one of your moderators for this evening, Becky Ferguson.
Thank you, John. Tonight's debate is made possible by you, our members, in partnership with the League of Women Voters and Midland, the city of Midland, in an abundance of caution related to COVID. We do not have community members in our audience tonight, just candidate family members and campaign staff, but we are thrilled to have you all, our Basin PBS members and campaign We will be bringing you Facebook, we will also be having you on Facebook, and joining me tonight at the moderator's desk is our lead moderator for tonight's debate, former Basin PBS Board Member and publisher of the Odessa American, Mr. Pat Canty, and president of the League of Women Voters of Midland, Ms. Emily Holiva. Pat?
Thank you very much, Becky. And we'd also like to say a quick thank you to Fast Signs because, well, for being fast. So tonight's debate will be 90 minutes in length with one two-minute break. Questions were developed by a small team, including the moderators, a representative from Basin PBS, and the public was also invited to submit questions via the Basin PBS Facebook page. We also have a couple of very special guests from the Midland Early College High School Government Class here with us tonight to ask our candidates a few questions. Now, we'll begin tonight's debate by giving each candidate, in order of how they are listed on the ballot, two minutes for opening remarks. After these opening remarks, the moderators shall pose a series of general questions. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Now, in the event a candidate's answer to a question invokes the name or policy position of one or more opponents, the moderators, at our sole discretion, can give the referenced opponent 30 seconds to respond. It is important to note, an individual candidate may also be asked a direct question because of a statement or policy position that he or she has made during the campaign. The campaign, the candidate, will have one minute to answer that direct question. The 30-second rebuttal rule shall still apply. At the conclusion of tonight's questions, each candidate will have one minute for closing statements.
We would like to remind everyone that this is a live broadcast. Flash photography, booing, making loud noises, or other disruptive actions or comments are not allowed. Tonight, we will also have an opportunity to hear from students with the Midland Early College Government Class. Now, let's meet our five candidates. Ladies and gentlemen, please join us in welcoming Ms. Robin Poole, Mr. Michael Trost, Mr. Dan Corrales, Mr. Dustin Johnson, and Mr. Spencer Robnett. Welcome, candidates. We will now begin our opening remarks. Ms. Poole, your opening remarks.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Robin Poole, and I wanted to start the evening by thanking Basin PBS and the League of Women Voters for having this event for us this evening. I also wanted to thank my fellow candidates for agreeing to be here, and I wanted to thank Councilman Trost and Councilman Robnett for your service to the city. It's very much appreciated. And Spencer, I wanted to give a special thank you to you for bringing Shipley's Donuts to Midland. That's from my eight-year-old son, and I'm pretty sure that if he was able to vote, he would do so just because of that.
Thank you very much.
I mean, he wouldn't vote for his mother.
Moving on to who I am and why I'm running. For those of you that don't know, I ran in 2019 for the District 3 seat and narrowly lost that race. Since then, the conviction in my heart has only grown stronger to serve this city, and I'm hoping that that comes forward tonight and that you're able to see that. I'm a lifelong Midlander. I was born and raised here, and I genuinely love this city, and I love the people. They were instrumental in creating the person that I am today. I currently am living here with my husband and two children that currently live here, and my third is off at Texas A&amp;M for his freshman year. And I have high hopes that Midland is the city that he chooses to return to whenever he's ready to settle down, and I'm going to do my best to make that happen. I'm ready to serve in whatever capacity I can to change the narrative that's surrounding our city. I think for far too long, we've heard phrases like, "Midland's not much to look at, but the people are great." And the people here deserve a quality of life that matches the quality of its great people. So I'm also ready to listen, and I said, the last campaign, I was ready to serve, and I'd like to add that I value communication, and I'm ready to listen to the ideas and the views of our citizens here to change the quality of life here.
Mr. Trost, your opening remarks.
Well, thank you. Well, I am Michael Trost, and I am asking for your vote. I planted my roots in Midland 40 years ago. I've raised a family here, co-owned with my wife, a major childcare center, for over 21 years. And I'm running for reelection because property taxes, increasing in property taxes is never, and I mean never, the solution to the challenges that we face. George W. Bush, our own George W. Bush, once said that a promise made is a promise kept. When you elected me in 2018, I told you that I would use my conservative leadership and experience to be fiscally responsible, find non-property tax sources of revenue, support our first responders and healthcare professionals, protect and enhance our neighborhoods. I believe I've done just that. That's one of the reasons why I'm running for reelection, and that is my opening statement. And I thank you for this forum. I think it's great, and I welcome all my candidates, fellow candidates here. It's a good crew. Thank you, Robin. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Corrales, your opening remarks.
Thank you to Basin PBS and the League of Women Voters. Thank you, Becky, Pat, and Emily, for being the moderators. Thank you to the candidates and the incumbents running for office. It isn't easy. Ask anyone, it's tough because you're making a sacrifice. Your family is making a sacrifice for the greater good. Growing up in Midland, we used to have our high school games at Memorial Stadium. On the Fourth of July, we'd tailgate it out of Christensen when we used to have the Angels here. And after Midland College, I went away for almost 20 years, spent some time in bigger cities, spent some time abroad, studied abroad, came back, and when I came back, Midland had grown a little bit. We went from a 915 to a 432. And it wasn't just the geography that changed. It was the melting pot that's Midland that's changed. We have people coming from different places. I don't believe we had a faux restaurant back when I was a kid. That's a little bit different. But those things just make us better. When we look at the city of tomorrow and what I'd like to do for our children, I don't want to kick the can down the road for my son, handing him things that need to be done that could be done in my lifetime. If you have an old house in Midland, a pier and beam, you leave a roof that hadn't been taken care of for 20 years, and galvanized pipes that you just replaced two foot of it when you know you got to do the whole thing. I view that very much like this city. I want to make sure that what I'm leaving for our children is the best that it can be. So how do you do that? Well, by thinking out of the box a little bit. When we talk about our values, God, family, and country, and the things that haven't changed from when I grew up, those are the same things, but our policies with this pandemic, we've had to adapt. Our government has to adapt. And as a business owner that's had to learn through a pandemic and through a freeze, how do you become more efficient? I think our city can become more efficient, but also more inclusive of everyone that's here. That's my opening statement. Thank you, Midland. I ask for your vote kindly on October 18th.
Mr. Johnson, your opening remarks.
All right. Good evening. I'm Dustin Johnson, and I first would like to thank Basin PBS and the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight. I believe our city is made better when our community actively participates in our election process, and I am grateful to have this opportunity to speak directly to voters alongside our other candidates. When you look at me, the last thing you would think is a politician. I'm not polished or perfect. I lived in Midland for 25 years, graduated from Lee, joined the Navy, served honorably for two and a half years before being medically retired. I'm just an ordinary guy who has worked hard to improve our community. I've been attending city council meetings for years, and I work closely with Parks and Rec to tackle maintenance issues at the local skate park. I've been putting time and doing work long before I decided to run for office. After dealing with city council for years and with not much progress, I really realized there was much more than the needs to be taken care of in Midland than just the park. From failing infrastructure such as roads and flooding to throwing away money on failed projects downtown, Midland needs a fresh face in city council, someone from the working middle class to make some changes that are long overdue. I'm Dustin Johnson. I'm asking for your vote for Midland City Council at-large. That's my opening statement.
Mr. Robnett, your opening remarks.
Good evening. Many thanks to Basin PBS for hosting the event again tonight. This is my first time participating in a debate in the new Basin PBS, a wonderful facility, and thank you so much for having us. This is my fifth city council race in eight years, and I really enjoy this process because I think it gives the community a time to check in on their leaders, debate the issues, really see where we are, what we've done, and maybe where we're going. It also provides opponents to incumbent city councilmen like myself an opportunity to challenge our record, challenge our vote, and I think that's a really good thing. I think this process doesn't work very well unless I vote and stand up and back up what I voted for. The reason I'm running for reelection this year is the same reason I originally ran eight years ago. I love our city and this community and believe everybody has an obligation, however big or small, to make this community a better place to live. That doesn't have to be in an elected or public capacity either. It might just be a PTA volunteer, Little League coach, volunteer at church, food kitchen, or other nonprofit. I grew up, I watched my parents serve on the board of the MARC, Special Olympics, and various booster clubs, and I've watched untold members of this community also volunteer and serve their time and raise money to make this community better. Everyone up here today beside me volunteers in this community as well in some capacity, and that is exactly what makes Midland better. Mr. Trost serves alongside me on the city council, Mr. Corrales on the Chamber of Commerce, as well as this PBS Board, Ms. Poole through her church, and among other things, and Mr. Johnson on the Skate Park Association Board, like you just mentioned. I do think it's important, though, when I run for reelection, to tell you what I've done and where my priorities stand, and I think those are very simple and really boil down to three things. First, infrastructure. When I came into the city council seven years ago, we were faced with and still face deteriorating public infrastructure. We've invested $300 million to date in public infrastructure. We've also allocated $45 million into our park system in the last seven years, including 15 million of which was done through a public-private partnership. Alongside that, we must support our police and fire and first responders. I've found ways, and this council has found ways over the last seven years, to improve our police and fire by $35 million in investments.
Tom?
I'm proud of where Midland's been, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and run for reelection. I respectfully ask for your vote again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll get started with the question-and-answer portion of the debate, and the first question deals with taxes. Recently, in a vote of 5 to 2, the city council voted to increase property taxes. Now, for the incumbents here tonight, how did you vote and why? And for the challengers, if you were on the council for that vote, how would you have voted and why? And to start it off, we'll start with you, Ms. Poole.
Thank you. I think that if I were on the council, I would have voted against the rate increase. I can understand why the city raised the rate. I understand that historically, the city has raised the rate due to inflation and population growth. However, I think the timing was off. After coming off the heels of 2020 and everything that our city and our population went through, there are people that are still in the middle of recovery. There are still people that are just trying to make ends meet, and so I think that it might have been a little bit more prudent to hold off a year and let people really get their feet back underneath them before they looked at a rate increase, much less the maximum rate increase.
Thank you very much. Moving on, Mr. Trost. Well, I voted against increasing property taxes because I don't, I agree with Ms. Poole, this is not the time. The citizens need a breather. They need a break to get back on their feet, to look things over and make sure of where they stand. As I said before, it should never be the first solution to the challenges that we face. To me, raising property taxes is the easy way out rather than looking for non-property tax sources of revenue. Thank you very much. Mr. Corrales.
I would vote for not increasing your property taxes. As a business owner, well, my wife owns a business, I just worked there, but I understand a P and L, and I understand efficiency. And with this pandemic, what have I learned? I've learned that we've had to adapt, and our government has to adapt as well. So when you look at sources of revenue and increasing property tax, look at the Scarborough Sports Complex. We paid that with something that the voters voted on, and we paid it off early because we were thinking differently and thinking smarter. So if we just resort in our business to not managing it as efficiently as we can and raising prices, we're going to lose our customers. So with taxpayers, if we're looking at how we can efficiently manage the city and change some of the things that we do, there's always room for improvement. Maybe we don't need to raise our property tax. Maybe we can find other ways to spend the money you're already paying the city a little bit more efficiently. That's my two cents as a business owner, but it's also my two cents as a taxpayer, and I want the government to spend my money wisely.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
All right. I totally would not have voted to raise it. I would stand against raising taxes. I feel we should just be smarter with our money. I would have stepped back and took a better look at the budget, made sure we're spending money wisely in an appropriate manner. And then, we shouldn't have to raise our taxes for any of this. Many of the middle class has been struggling for the last two years due to the pandemic. I be myself indeed. I'm a photographer, and so when schools shut down, we couldn't go to schools to take pictures. So we were out of work for a brief amount of time, and raising taxes did not help at all, and so I would have definitely voted against it.
Thank you. Mr. Robnett.
Yeah, I think it's a great question, and maybe a misunderstood question a little bit as it relates to the city of Midland budget. I voted in favor of a property tax increase, but I think it's important to understand where we were two years ago in our budget process and where we are now. In 2020, our general fund budget to revenue was $159 million. In 2021, that same general fund budgeted revenue was $135 million. We dropped our property tax budget and our general fund budget by $24 million year-over-year. Our 2022 budget is a $1 or $1.2 million increase year-over-year from 2021 levels. And let me tell you what those taxes pay for. This year's budget, they paid for nine new firefighters, they paid for three new positions at the animal shelter, they paid for a new ambulance, and I'd also like to say that the city of Midland, the general consensus is their taxes are too high, and they are across the board. The problem with the local tax rate involves Robin Hood and recapture with the Midland Independent School District. This community will send $150 million back to Austin this year through the Midland Independent School District and the Texas Education Association, so.
Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, an infrastructure question. It's estimated that infrastructure investments of $420 million will be required over the next nine years for new repairs and replacements of roads, water, and sewer systems. What are your ideas for making this kind of investment, and how would you pay for it? We start with you, Mr. Trost.
Well, we have to start, first of all, Ms. Ferguson, with recognizing that what we have to do is be cooperative, get cooperation with the federal government, there's federal money, the state government, the county government, cooperate with all these entities, direct those resources to where we know we need them. And so I think that cooperation and working with our other agencies is the way to pay for it.
Mr. Corrales.
Working in construction over a decade, having built the cleaners, having built the golden chick, I know what infrastructure looks like. I've seen it firsthand. I know what's under those roads. There's a lot to be fixed, I agree, and it can seem overwhelming. First, you assess what you need to fix, then what's smart to fix simultaneously in tandem for an economy of scale, and then what you would like to fix. With $420 million, you really have to talk about not raising property taxes to an onerous level, but looking to the taxpayers and putting it forth on a bond. We did that with the road bond, we did that with the Scarborough Sports Complex, and you ask any taxpayer in Midland, they want to say in how the government spends their money. So if you're going to spend that much, talk to people, get out there, hear what voters have to say, have an open door, don't just say that, and don't expect them to come to you, go to them, but put it on the ballot and ask voters to approve it. That's how you do it wisely.
Mr. Johnson.
Would you mind restate the question?
Certainly. It's estimated that infrastructure investment of about $420 million will be required over the next nine years for new repairs and replacements of roads, water, and sewer systems. What are your ideas for making this kind of investment, and how would you pay for it?
I would definitely look at restructuring it and then go back to the engineering drawing board, possibly bringing in more crews to spread the workout, because I believe it's taken way too long for many of these road projects. The crews are having to start one, go to another, and bounce around, and drawing out the projects, it's not, it just doesn't make sense to be doing it that way. So I would definitely go back to the drawing board, look at bringing in more crews, more companies, spread the workout, many hands make light work. Definitely be a lot smarter with tax, with the money, invest in a mission, make it last a lot longer than it's lasting right now.
Mr. Robnett.
The infrastructure in the city's aging. In the last seven years, this city council, myself included, has invested $300 million, over $300 million in infrastructure into this city. That includes a $100 million road bond, a new $10 million animal shelter we opened yesterday. It includes a whole host of permanent infrastructure investments that will make the city better long-term. The way you fund those is through a combination of a lot of different places. We commissioned a new wastewater plant this year with Pioneer Natural Resources and a public-private partnership, which was $130 million savings to the taxpayers. So if we're going to talk about a tax increase, I think it's also necessary to talk about a tax decrease and a tax savings. That single public-private partnership alone saved the taxpayers over $130 million without interest on a required future wastewater plant upgrade that the city was going to have to find a way to pay for regardless. In addition to public-private partnerships, there are development agreements, Midland Development Corporation, there are ARPA funds that I hope we talk about here in a little bit, and being smart with your money and budgeting the city properly and prioritizing investments in the right manner.
Ms. Poole.
Thank you. As you said, the city has a, currently has a nine-year infrastructure plan, and I would like to see them go to a longer-term plan. That's maybe a 30-year plan. That's what some of the larger metropolitan areas are doing, and I think taking a slow, steady approach to address maintenance and new development is the way to go. I think that Midland is used to the cycle of booms and busts, and I think that we need to make sure that we continue to invest whether we're in a boom time or whether we're in a bust. We can't afford to neglect our infrastructure and get to where we were years ago, where everything just was so neglected. In order to pay for those things, I think storm drainage fees are a great way to maybe address some of the maintenance issues with water and sewer. That's a fee that continues to accrue and is available for use. As Spencer said, the MDC is another great resource. They have committed 30% of their budget towards infrastructure projects and currently are partnering with Tech dot to bring in federal funding for some road projects.
Thank you. All right. Let's zero in on roads for a minute here. How does or should the council prioritize road construction and improvements, including construction of new roads and the repair of existing roads? And how will you plan for future road projects? We'll begin with you, Mr. Corrales.
My son's a student at Bynum, and with autism, things are needs-based. You look at what the needs are for each student separately. You have to look at the city the same way. This city is, I'm blockwalking it, is large. It covers a large piece of acreage, and you have to look at some of the new roads, some of the old roads, and that's the importance of going and talking with Jose Ortiz, the engineer, having some idea of what infrastructure is if you have construction experience, and understanding, how do you do that best? Look at the county and the city working together. They just did a bunch of work on Fairgrounds Road, and that's because we had an economy of scale where two tax entities worked together in synergy. So if we're talking about doing something, and say, for example, Atmos has a gas line or Encore has a power line, are we working not just harder, but smarter in how we address our roads based on need? That's how I would do it.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes. I would definitely, because there's many roads here in Midland that need work that I've not, are long forgotten about. There's tons on the south side and east side that are still dirt roads, and here in a city like Midland, we should not have, you know, dirt roads in the city limits. So we need to go through and make a list on which ones need to be prioritized, which roads need the most work, which roads had the worst potholes, and we need to get them roads up to date, up to par, and then look more into what we can do with the newer roads. But we need to take care of what we have, fix what we have going right now, and make sure it's going to last longer than 10 years. And we definitely have to be smarter with our money. We shouldn't be going in, building a road, tearing it back up, fixing some infrastructure or some plumbing behind it, going back in and repaving it. That's twice the, spending twice the money we shouldn't do. We should just go do it one time, get it done correct, and be done with it. That's it.
Mr. Robnett.
The priority of the roads and in which order they are built or repaved or reconstructed should lie with the experts, and that's the city engineering office, that's the city manager's office. The city of Midland has undertaken countless studies over the last few years to grade our roads and decide which roads are best, which roads are worst, which roads need the most work, and which roads can be paired with infrastructure improvements alongside surface paving and reconstruction. This year's budget, the 2021-2022 city of Midland budget, also included a new position within the Engineering Services Department for a capital projects manager, one that will watch our capital projects, which this year will, on the roadside, will be about $25 million spent on road repair, reconstruction, or new construction this year. So this year's city budget will prioritize with a new position all those major capital projects with roads being at the top of the list.
Ms. Poole.
Thank you. I think that prioritization is probably the thing that we need to focus on most. I know that the current road bond, when I met with Jose Ortiz, I think that the city really does, from an engineering standpoint, try to pinpoint which roads to address in a manner that's not going to be an inconvenience for the citizens of Midland. As far as which roads we address moving forward, I think the city has allocated a good amount of general fund monies to go towards road improvement. I question a little bit how we are prioritizing those. I know that there are roads in South Midland that have needed to be paved for over 20 years. I actually grew up in South Midland, and I grew up on a Caliche Road, and my mother went to the city council numerous times to try to get our road paved because it was a safety issue. People like to drag race down the road, and we had a truck come through our fence multiple times, and we were not able to ever get anywhere with the city, and I think we need to prioritize those kinds of situations.
Mr. Trost.
Well, I agree. I agree wholeheartedly with that. We have a plan. The city engineers department, we went over this, I went over this with Mr. Ortiz not very long ago, and he pointed out to me areas that we're going to use some ARPA, CDBG ARPA funds in the next go-around. $6 million have been dedicated to paving unpaved streets on the south and east side of Midland, and I think that is definitely a stretch, a step in the right direction, and that's what I'm talking about, using funds and cooperating with other entities that can provide us the funds to do those things that are necessary for roads, infrastructure, et cetera. I think that the approach that our staff, the city manager's staff is taking is well-planned, well-directed, and they're doing a good job. As a matter of fact, I think I need to point out that the road bond, the construction of the streets and the things they have been doing under the road bond is already ahead of schedule and under budget, so I think that shows that what they are doing is the right thing. Thank you. Downtown has seen over $60 million in investment over the last five years, including the Bush Convention Center and Centennial Park. Do you believe the city should continue to invest more money in downtown, and if yes, how much more and for what projects? Let's see, we'll start first with you, Mr. Johnson.
All right. I think I really appreciate all the money that's been spent downtown. I enjoy spending time at Centennial Plaza, Centennial Park. Been out there quite a bit. It's very beautiful. I think when you start spreading the money out, we have other big parks throughout the city, on the east side, the north side, that we could, you know, put some money into, make them better. At a Bill Park, there's a huge outdoor amphitheater and a big grassy hill. We put some money into it out there, that park could be just as nice as Centennial Park in downtown. We just dropped around $55 million into Hogan Park. That's going to be bringing in quite a bit of money, you know, which spread it. That's going to be bringing in quite a bit of money, you know, which spread around a little bit more, because, I mean, downtown's coming along is really good, but it's time to start spreading that money out.
Thank you. Mr. Robnett?
I believe the $60 million that was discussed being invested in downtown, $45 million of which was the Bush Convention Center, which is paid for by outside visitors to this community via hotel motel tax, and the $15 million park. Just about all that $15 million was raised privately through public-private partnerships to build and create, I think, what's the greatest park in downtown Midland. We're called the Tall City for a reason. I think we should be proud of our downtown. I think Midlanders and those that come to Midland, friends, family, business associates from out of town, when they come to the city of Midland, we should have something that they can come and look at and be proud of. They should come and we should have something to show off. So I will continue to look for ways to encourage development downtown. We have right now approximately $50 billion in publicly traded market cap held in downtown Midland. Those are public companies held in downtown Midland. That's unheard of for a city of our size, and the city's job should be to encourage development, encourage quality-of-life investments, and put our downtown in a, in a position that, that we're all proud of.
Thank you. Ms. Poole?
I think that the money that we have already invested to develop downtown in Centennial Park was a great investment. I think that there were a lot of naysayers before all of that happened that couldn't really see the vision, and I think now that the park is there, there's no doubt that the morale of our city has been boosted because of its creation. Moving forward at this time, strictly from a priority standpoint, I don't think that we should invest anymore. There are other things that our funds could go towards. I think the free market will actually take care of downtown. If you, if you spend an evening, an evening down there, you'll see all the restaurants, the micro-market, and all of the businesses that are currently putting in and really bringing a breath of fresh air to the downtown scene. So for now, I think that we need to kind of take a wait-and-see approach with downtown and invest in other areas.
Thank you. Mr. Trost?
Well, we obviously need to keep investing in all areas, but it's how we invest and what we invest in and what, what the project is and how it's going to enhance Midland as a whole, not just one particular area. I, I have just completed the second meeting by my invitation of the Marriott group who was talking with a local developer, one of their top developers in the nation, to, to put up, build a brand-new hotel downtown Midland. The, the meeting went very positively, and it will be a private enterprise situation. It won't, they're not asking for any, at this point, they're not asking for any taxpayer money. So this is the kind of thing that I think Ms. Poole's talking about, that the market, marketplace, once everything is, is correct, will invest in downtown Midland, so we don't have to spend a lot of money. We may have to put up some for infrastructure needs, those kind of things that are necessary. However, I, I agree that, that the marketplace will take care of itself, and we need to just support those efforts. Whatever is requested, we need to look at very, very stringently and to make our decisions based on if we are going to invest as a city, your taxpayer dollars in this, this particular venture.
Thank you. And Mr. Kraus?
The theater we're standing in was the Ritz, and I remember coming here, watching Jaws as a kid. And Main Street, for those that know old Midland, you could buy a Frigidaire appliance in the stores down here. This was the heartbeat of Midland. Centennial Park and the Bush Convention Center is a rejuvenation of that. It would be wise of the council and the city to look at how we can continue supporting that and to make it someplace that not just families want to come because there's a park, but businesses. Look at what's going on Wall Street, the bookstore, or a little bit of wine if you want with your books for a good read, Pi Social as well, and all the little micro-markets that are here. It is spurring entrepreneurs, and that's what West Texas, anybody talks to a wildcatter. It was someone who wanted to start a business. So when we talk about infrastructure, maybe we need to look at investing in parking down here so we can have more businesses. Those are some of the things that I think we need to look out of the box for.
Thank you so much. Now we have an opportunity to hear from a student from the Early College High School. We have Caleb Gallando. Caleb, your question?
How do you feel about transportation options currently about, available in our city? Do we have enough options? If not, what will you do to increase those?
And we'll start with Mr. Robnett on that question.
Ms. Caleb? Caleb, thanks for being here. Great question. Public transportation, I think if that was the question, is pretty difficult in West Texas. The city of Midland funds through local cooperative agreements and different partnership agreements. The Easy Rider bus system, which transits public and has, provides public access between Midland, Odessa, around Midland, and also Odessa. Public transit in Midland probably doesn't have taxpayer support, and so I would say that right now, I don't know if public transit is high on the council's priority list, but we're always looking at opportunities to partner, to increase public transit and mobility. What we do in that regard, too, is, is bike lanes, hike and bike trails. I think you'll see a lot more mobility-focused incentives and mobility-focused projects to move around the city of Midland in the coming years.
Thank you, Mr. Robnett. Ms. Poole?
I believe that the Easy Rider system is a wonderful service that we can provide our citizens that do not have automobiles or ways to get places. Speaking from a priority standpoint again, I don't think that we need to, at this time, further public transportation. However, as the city grows and develops over the years, I, I definitely think we need to keep it on our list of things to continue to circle back and look at and, and just continue to reevaluate if, if there's a need for, for more public transportation.
Thank you. Mr. Trost?
Well, public transportation, of course, is, I think, necessary to any growing municipality. Our system right now has, we've got, the main complaints that I hear, I sat on that board for several years previously, and one of the main complaints was the length of time between buses. Of course, that would require more money invested in that system. But one of the other things that affects ridership is where you wait for the bus. And in Midland, if you take a good look around at the bus stops, you will see very few of them are covered. So people are standing out in the heat, they're standing out in the rain, or the snow, or whatever it may be, very uncomfortable, waiting on a bus that could be 30, 45 minutes away. So I think that I've already, today, as a matter of fact, I talked with one of our assistant city managers about including this in the next round of ARPA funds that we're going to get in 2022, in May of 2022, about possibly including all covered bus stops everywhere in Midland, not for the whole system, just in Midland. That's our concern as Midland.
Thank you, Mr. Trost. Mr. Kraus?
How do we further it? Are we talking routes? Are we talking the shelter? You've got to talk to the people that use it. Precine Organic Cleaners is right next to HEB, and as I go to work and help my wife, sometimes I see people waiting for it, and Michael's right, Councilman Trost is right. Those shelters make it difficult if you use public transportation in the summer. As any West Texan will know, standing out in the sun in the middle of the summer is extremely, it's a health risk. You can have a heat stroke. What about when it rains? So when we talk about, how do we further the interest? How about having more people use it by making it more accommodating? There's federal money that can be used, it doesn't have to be Midland taxpayers, property taxes, or things of that nature. As Councilman Trost said, ARPA money, there's other sources that we can use. So let's not discount it, let's actually focus on it. And one day, just like I have, wait for an Easy Rider, get on the bus, and then you'll know what it looks like to use public transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Mr. Johnson?
All right, this is actually something I have been looking into. I've spent quite a bit of time in San Francisco, and that city has one of the best public transit systems in the world, in my, my opinion. You can live there and not even have a vehicle. You can get anywhere you want, just walk out your door, hop on a bus, take it down to one of the main lines, hop on a train or another bus, you get anywhere you need to get to. And I think Midland growing as it is, we need to start investing in that to plan for the future. We need to have more routes that would hit more of the local area so that people who don't drive will be able to get around. It would also free up people from having to drive everywhere, which would get less people on the road and make driving conditions a little bit better. Let's see. But we definitely do that by having the, the smaller routes, it would be all throughout the city community. We definitely need to get the, the stops, you know, get people out of the weather, because like they said, you're out in the sun, you're in the rain, that's not good. Actually, we're trying to get people to use this system. And I feel that if we have the public transit system where it is up to that par, where people can get out and get where they need to go without driving somewhere, it would definitely be getting used. It would need to be run 24 hours so, like, people from the bar could get out and not have to drive, and that would get less people off the road.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
It's no secret Midland is going to continue to keep growing. One of the most important aspects of that growth is the city's planning and zoning. What is the most important thing to keep in mind so the city grows in a smart manner? And we'll start with you, Ms. Poole.
Thank you. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I think that we just have to continue to look at our priorities. We have to be able to address where growth is actually, actually happening, and we need to be able to move in that direction. I think, again, back to slow, steady investment and that 30-year plan, I think having a, a larger plan with a bigger vision is definitely going to be necessary in order to really plan for the growth that we have experienced in the past and will continue to experience in the future. The last downturn cycle, our population continued to grow, and I don't think that it's going to really ever stop. And I think if you look back to the last boom cycle, things really got out of control for, for us as a city, and we weren't able to meet the needs of development. And so I think that slow, steady approach to investing in development and infrastructure will keep up with maintenance but also allow for the growth to happen and us to be able to invest in that growth as it comes.
Mr. Trost?
Would you repeat the question again, please?
Of course. It's no secret Midland is going to continue to keep growing. One of the most important aspects of that growth is the city's planning and zoning. What is the most important thing to keep in mind so the city grows in a smart manner?
Well, the infrastructure needs of growth is a major concern, and that includes water, sewer, the necessities that we have to have to provide. And as we grow outward, do we really want to continue to grow outward that quickly? And that's what we're doing. What we have to take a good look at is what are infill projects that we can utilize to the best, to move forward. I sat with Mr. Ortiz, as I mentioned before, and we looked at many locations in Midland, inside the loop even, that could be, provide many homes. I don't have a number, but a large number of homes along unpaved roads, streets which we're getting to, to do, and in those areas. So we need to look inside rather than continue to look outside. The developers will take care of that and come to us with that. We have to decide where we're going to invest in that infrastructure and how we're going to do it. It takes, it takes a concerted effort and planning on the city's staff side to bring to the council for us to decide where we're going to go. We have to be very careful about how we invest these dollars, your dollars, in these infrastructure needs that will, as it goes further out, it gets more expensive. We have to be careful.
Mr. Kraus?
Planning and zoning, we have a commission, we have a department. I've spoken to Mr. Thorpe when he was there, Christina Odenberg Burns. I've been to many Planning and Zoning Commission meetings on Mondays at 3:30, and it's how you learn how building in the city works. With Precine Organic Cleaners, we built it from the ground up. I put the drywall up, I built the counter, and I had inspections, and I understood what it's like to work with the city and have people that come and inspect it, and you get your certificate of occupancy. So how do we make growing smart? How do we make the building code that we adopt developer-friendly, but also understand responsible development? If we're going to build something like a five-story building next to a residential house, that doesn't make sense because it, the Tall City Tomorrow Plan shouldn't just be lip service. It should be, we're going to build the same kind of thing next to your house. So smart growth is responsible development and knowing the importance of the building code and the commission and the Planning and Zoning Department.
Mr. Johnson?
All right, there's no question denying that Midland is growing, even though we went through a downturn, even through the pandemic, Midland's still growing, so we have to get ready for that. And more important for me for the growth, we have to get the infrastructure fixed. The Midland expanding out like it is, we definitely need to make sure that our, the sewage lines, the water lines, they're good to go. Maybe more wastewater treatment, just to get that out there, because Midland's growing, and we just have to be ready for it. We have to be smarter, that's how we're spending our money on infrastructure plans. That's it, just have to be smart with spending.
Mr. Robnett? Oh, of course.
I heard the answer's a few different ways there.
Going to have this one memorized.
Thank you.
It's no secret Midland is going to continue to keep growing. One of the most important aspects of that growth is the city's planning and zoning. What is the most important thing to keep in mind so the city grows in a smart manner?
Got it, thank you so much. The most important thing to keep in mind so the city grows in a smart manner is the same thing that the city should keep in mind in everything they do, in every decision they make. The most important thing is to listen to the constituents. The most important thing is to listen to those in the, in the neighborhoods most affected by potential zoning changes or infrastructure plans. It, it's really simple, this works, this representative government works when constituents talk to the city council, the city council listens, and the city council never should turn, turn away from those residents and constituents most affected by any planning or zoning changes. So after that, I think you need to sit down and be able to make smart, reasonable decisions about what things should go and where. We have plenty of guides and master plans that look 10, 15, and 20 years out, those should be used as guides. But other than listening to constituents and letting free market decide what they want and where, I think that's how you should, should prioritize and, and maybe control or administer planning and zoning and, and development and growth throughout the city of Midland.
Thank you. Staying on the, the zoning code issue, i- if you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why? Start with you, Mr. Trost.
If I could change one thing in the zoning code, I really don't have many issues with the zoning code. I just think, there, there is one thing that, that we, we have the policy now where if you bring into the city, annex into the city a piece of property, you also have to zone it. I think those should be two separate issues. That has come up recently, and it has caused, to me, it's caused some real concerns with the citizens around the grasslands area regarding Nueva Vista. So that's one of the issues that I think we need to address.
Thank you. Mr. Kraus?
Having experience building things here, I'd say I know the code. I'm also an attorney, so I go down to the county law library, and they have the City of Midland Municipal Code, in case anybody wants to go down there and read it. One of the things that the city does is they adopt selectively the national code, and they take certain things depending on something that may fit with the city or doesn't fit with the city. One of the things that I saw, and I spoke to a lot of home builders, and they were saying, you know, this requirement here, that city inspectors have a certain amount of experience, it's not a whole lot. My grandpa told me, he screwed in a light bulb 50 years ago, much the same way we do now. Some things don't change all that much. So when you're an inspector with less than a year or so of experience, maybe two, I think, is the requirement now, and you're telling someone who's been in the building business for years that the way that they did it isn't right, I'm sorry, I think they need a little bit more experience. So if you ask me what needs to change, we need inspectors that pay respect to the people that have been building the city.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Um, off the top of my head, I don't have any issues with the, with planning and zoning as it stands right now. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Robnett?
There's a little bit of difference in the planning and zoning code and, and building code, maybe, which Mr. Kraus was referencing earlier, but if I had a magic wand and I could wave it today, I would say timing would be maybe the magic thing out of the planning and zoning code I would change. We're governed by state law and the notices and the timing of which planning and zoning, planning and zoning process works, and how long it takes to request a rezone, and how long it takes to go to planning and zoning, and how many hearings you have to go before city council and read is required by state law. But that's, that's not a bad thing either, because that gives the public time for input, it gives the public time to be heard on what they may or may not want in regards to a zone change. So crystal ball would be timing. Other than that, some nuances regarding planned districts and how difficult they might be to administer for staff and how difficult they are for public to understand, but just some maybe small things that frustrate me over the years, so I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms., Ms. Poole?
If I may, on the rebuttal, or if you want to get her answer first?
Go ahead, you have 30 seconds for rebuttal.
So in reference to what Mr. Robnett said, he's right, the building code and the planning and zoning code are two separate things. So thank you for the, a little bit more time to elaborate. On the planning and zoning code, some of the things that I think should be improved, On the planning and zoning code, some of the things that I think should be improved, and one specifically, would be people that live in the city that want to be able to voice their opinion and have it heard. When you look at the planning and zoning code, having the signatures required so that you can be heard makes it extremely difficult, so I think that should be narrowed down so that Midlanders can voice their opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Poole?
Well, along that same line, I definitely think the public has a right to get involved when there are zoning changes near their neighborhoods or their businesses. The Nueva Vista situation that has been going on is definitely evidence of that, and it may get into some of the state regulations like Councilman Robnett was talking about, but I would, I would like to see the communication change. I know that notification letters are sent out, I believe, 120 or 120 or 150 days before, and I think if we could give a little bit more time for those individuals and residents to file petitions and get signatures, I think that would be great. I also think it's not necessarily a change in policy, but the city's communication on projects of that scope, reaching out to residents well before notification letters are sent out, would do a great deal in building trust with the residents.
Thank you, Ms. Poole. Please stay tuned as we take a short break, and when we come back, we will continue to hear from our candidates.
Hi, I'm Emily, your Basin PBS membership director. You might recognize my name from some of the letters you receive from Basin PBS, or if you've called the station, you've probably talked to me. Sure, you watch our programs and come to our events, but what actually happens if you don't support Basin PBS? What's the worst that could happen? Sure, things might change a little, there might be some cuts here and there. We'd probably have to get rid of some of the kids' programming and dramas, some of the news programs and live events, and probably a lot of the arts and culture programming you can't see anywhere else. But what does it really matter if you don't support Basin PBS? You'll hardly know the difference.
Welcome back to our 2021 Midland City Council at-large debate, coming to you live from Basin PBS in the Anwar Family Studio. Tonight's show is in partnership with the League of Women Voters of Midland and sponsored by All-American Chevy of Midland. I would just like to remind our candidates that the rules, as mentioned at the beginning of our program, still apply. Let's start with, we're going to take, go to Becky and take our first question.
Next question. Thanks, Pat. Do you believe that revitalization and historic preservation should be priorities of the council? And we'll start with Mr. Corrales.
What makes Midland Midland? It's history, maybe from the Cowdons and the Maybes and the Scarboroughs that came here and had cattle, then grew into oil. You have to remember where you come from to know where you're going. Your history matters. Your Western heritage matters. I grew up out in a county, learned to ride a horse when I was young, learned to shoot when I was young. So when we talk about preserving that history, I think we do have an obligation, I think we do have a responsibility for our children so that they remember where our values came from. And there are certain structures here like the Yucca. I've been fortunate enough to volunteer with Midland Community Theater and see summer mummers and clean up the popcorn. But there's history in that building, the structure of it, the period in which it was built tells us something about that, and I think that's extremely important. We have to do things that preserve our history, and the city should definitely be a part of preserving it.
Thank you, Mr. Corrales. Mr. Johnson?
All right. I myself, I love architecture, so seeing old buildings still standing and restored, I love doing that. That's one of my favorite things to do when I travel. And I think that that's definitely something that the council should be, and it shouldn't be a main priority, but they should have a hand involved in it. We shouldn't be tearing down old buildings and old houses just to make room for something new. We should be restoring it to let the future generations know what we had, where we've come from, back when things were built to last. One of my favorite places to go here is the Yucca. I love being inside there. I love the architecture. I love the detail, the hand craftsmanship that was put into it. Places like that deserve to be standing, and I feel that the council definitely should have a hand in preserving those places.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Robnett?
Absolutely. The city of Midland should encourage where responsible historic preservation of buildings, homes, neighborhoods, and we try to do some of those things, and really that starts, I think, centered around downtown, which was the heart of this city when Midland was first founded. We're having conversations now about preserving the old First National Bank Building, the old Western United Life Building. The city of Midland owns and rents the old Scarborough Lineberry House just south of downtown. This Permian, I mean, this Basin PBS building, also a historic building on Main Street here in downtown, was a candidate for revitalization, and city funds were used to help restore and maintain this building for everybody to use going forward. So absolutely where appropriate, where we have the funds to do so, or policy structure that would encourage revitalization and preservation of old historic buildings, we should absolutely do it.
Thank you, Mr. Robnett. Ms. Poole?
I absolutely believe that we should be revitalizing and preserving our history. I'm a communication major, and oral tradition is one of the theories that I really love to study. And oral tradition is more than just passing down stories, it's passing down history, it's passing down culture. It gives us a sense of belonging, and that's important not just in our individual lives and in our families, but our city. Our city has an identity as well, and we can't truly know who we are if we don't know where we've been. And so I absolutely think the city should invest in preserving historical buildings and things of that nature, and I'm excited about some of the projects that are in the works for that.
Thank you, Ms. Poole. Mr. Trost?
Yes, well, absolutely. History is what it is, and it needs to be preserved. There are many components to history, and oral history is something that we hear a lot about. There are very few structures left in Midland that fit that particular historical aspect. However, I would like to point out two things that Midland has done, entrepreneurs. We are, our city had developed at the Winddecker Hangar, the plane they call the Winddecker Eagle, which was the very first composite airplane ever built. All of the FAA regulations regarding composite airplane were established because of the Winddecker family and their investment in the Winddecker Eagle, which is being reconstructed today and will be flying soon. Secondly, we have another first in that our spaceport is the first, and still the only, commercial international spaceport in the world, not just the United States, but the world. Those are two magnificent firsts. To me, those are historical. So I guess we can say that we, history is not always about the past, it's about what we're doing with the present.
Thank you, Mr. Trost.
Thank you.
And now we have the opportunity to hear from one of our students from the Midland Early College High School, Robert Arciaaga.
Our city has basically no recycling. What will you do to change that?
Thank you, Robert. Let's have Mr. Johnson go first.
Okay. Recycling is not a big thing here in Midland. We have the facilities, but I don't think they're being used to their full potential. If we had more places to recycle throughout the community, different waste receptacles, having divided out, I think we could definitely get more onto that, go in that direction in Midland, and we could definitely, it would help clean up the dump, clean up the landfill, and it could give more jobs if we could just get more people doing, just more people recycling and we're more prepared about it.
Thank you. Mr. Robnett?
Recycling's an issue that has been discussed by many groups in cities and states and countries recently, not just the city of Midland. The city of Midland does have a recycling program, it's at the Citizens Collection Center. It is a limited recycling program, only specific materials, bottles, cans, cardboard of a certain type, you've got to have it sorted before you go and do that. But the reason the city got rid of the public collection centers outside of the Citizens Collection Center is because recycling was no longer profitable for the city of Midland due to China's mandates that they would not accept foreign-born recycling products anymore. And so this is not just a city of Midland issue. The decision was made because it was going to cost the city of Midland General Fund over $1 million a year to continue that recycling program, and it was a place we decided to cut, not because anybody wanted to, but because we had to, because the city of Midland decided that we weren't going to continue to fund a massive citywide recycling program that was unprofitable at the expense of the Midland taxpayer.
Thank you. Ms. Poole?
I think any world-class city needs to have the availability of recycling. However, like Mr. Robnett brought up, this is, this is an issue that's actually out of our control due to China not accepting any more of our recyclable, recyclable materials, and even cities that had successful recycling programs have had to cut back or sometimes dissolve their programs due to this very thing. I think what's going to serve Midland best is to focus on partnering with organizations like Keep Midland Beautiful, and really focusing on messaging to the citizens of Midland about conservation and about being a responsible community member, picking up your trash and things of that nature. I think that one of the ways that we can change the narrative of our city is to build community pride in the people that live here, and one of the ways that we do that is to get them involved in really taking care of our city.
Thank you. Mr. Trost? Well, recycling is a heavy issue these days. I mean, it's, it is not a profitable venture at this particular time. I would like to see recycling, I'm, I am a recycling advocate. However, right now, things are not there to recycle. However, there are companies who still will do that, but you have to deal with them in the respect of you have to privatize that particular aspect of your city. So it is possible to be done. There is even a company that will bring in what they call transfer stations, large places to dump your recyclables if we were to pick them up and take them to them, and they would take them out and keep returning back and forth to their recycling plant. So it's a myriad situation, myriad ways to approach it, and I agree with Mr. Robnett, the investment in that for the city of Midland right now is not fiscally responsible. And Mr. Corrales?
Recycling has a large interest in Midland. Having organic dry cleaners, you tend to talk to a lot of people that are interested in things of that nature. I agree from a fiscal perspective, maybe it's not something that makes money, maybe it's something that the city does lose a little money, but think of something out of the box. Don't rely on China to take our plastic and our other recyclables. Maybe we should think of something different, something new. I think that's one of the best things about West Texas. When you look at fracking, we're willing to try things that are new. So why discount recycling without first saying, perhaps we can explore what other cities have done, and maybe we can't do recycling as a whole, maybe just glass bottles instead of the plastic and the paper? But I'm not ready to discount it just yet. I think we can look into it, see what other cities have done successfully and emulate it. Don't say it can't be done. There is always one more thing we can try to figure out.
Well, may I address that?
I didn't invoke your name.
No. Oh, it has to invoke a name?
Yes.
We're going to move on to the next question. Thank you. The city received from the federal government approximately $12 million in COVID relief funds, some of which the city allocated to the hospital to help our healthcare system weather the great stress brought about by COVID. I understand another 12 to 14 million is promised to the city for receipt next May, and I understand there is also a very real possibility that the state will pass along some of its COVID relief funds to cities, including Midland. How would you propose expending those funds? And we're going to start with Mr. Robnett.
The city of Midland has received, I believe, over $25 million to date, and Mrs. Ferguson is right, maybe more coming in COVID, for now ARPA relief funds. The way I'd recommend spending those funds...
Mr. Robnett, you can start over since you had a mic problem.
The way I recommend the city spending those funds is very... Carefully and with a lot of public input. It, it's not every day that the city of Midland wakes up and finds funds more or less unrestricted for public use and not a project assigned to those funds. This is a boon to the city of Midland. It is something we've got to proceed with very carefully. The city of Midland was actually very cautious in the last year during the pandemic on the use and spend of those funds. The reason being, we didn't know about the pandemic, we didn't know when it was going to be over, we didn't know what was going to be required of those funds. We've partnered with the hospital in those funds. I believe you'll see a conversation in the next year regarding the spend and use of infrastructure with those funds. So again, I would just say, we should be very careful with these funds that can be used for historic community-changing projects that don't have a home right now, but we need to listen to the taxpayer and listen to everybody in this community on how we allocate those funds.
Thank you, Mr. Robnett. Ms. Poole?
I agree that prioritizing is, is the way that we need to go about allocating those funds and, and getting public, maybe a little bit of public consensus for some of those projects. I do think that it's appropriate to use them for infrastructure, and since that is one of our biggest needs, I think that continuing to invest some of those funds in infrastructure projects is definitely needed and necessary. I think moving forward concerning the hospital, I think if there is a way that we can partner with the hospital again in the future to help alleviate a little bit of the burden off of them, I think this is a time that we can kind of relax our roles as city council members and, and work with one of the other taxing entities and leaders in our community to address an overall issue that ultimately will, will benefit the health of our community as a whole. We have to have a healthy hospital to be a healthy city, and so if we can partner in the future, I think that that's an appropriate use also.
Thank you, Ms. Poole. Mr. Trost?
Yes, partnering is definitely important. I can't disagree with her on that. We have to be very careful. Some of the funds that we will be getting are kind of directed. We have to put them in a certain place, so we have to evaluate where that will be and how much we can utilize in that particular area. We will have approximately, I believe, another 24 million coming in, 20, no, actually, we've got 14 more million. We've used 14, we have 14 million available, but that includes the funds that will be coming in in May of 2022. So we have to really evaluate, listen to our staff, what their recommendations, the public needs to have input, there's no question about it, and partnering with our other entities like the hospital, places that needed our nonprofits, some of our nonprofits like CASA and other areas, and we need to just take a good, hard look at how we invest those dollars.
Mr. Corrales?
Do you mind repeating the question? I'm sorry.
Certainly. The city received from the federal government approximately $12 million in COVID relief funds, some of which the city allocated to the hospital to help our healthcare system weather the great stress brought about by COVID. I understand another 12 to 14 million is promised to the city for receipt next May, and I understand there's also a very real possibility that the state will pass along some of its COVID relief funds to cities, including Midland. How would you propose expending those funds?
Thank you. I appreciate that. When we look at the effect that the pandemic's had, healthcare workers have worked very long shifts. It's been very difficult for them this past year because they are there for us, and having been there and been stitched up once or twice, I appreciate what they do, and so I think we should allocate some of that funding to the hospital. What else has taken a hit? Small businesses. With our business, we didn't know how we were going to keep the lights on, and that was a genuine fear. And I can relate with other small business owners when we had the micro-business grant from the city of Midland and the county that worked through Midland College, through the CogDoe, to allocate those, to handle processing the applications, to give $10,000 grants to businesses when they needed it the most. I think we should be working with other tax entities like the hospital and the county and have a synergy. We can't be an army of one. We have to be an army of one community.
Thank you, Mr. Corrales. Thank you, Mr. Corrales. Mr. Johnson?
All right. We definitely need to evaluate where this money is going to. We need to reach out to the community. We need to host very town halls everywhere, reach out to various businesses, small businesses, and other nonprofits throughout the city, and see where, who needs the money, who needs the most funds, who is affected the most by the pandemic. Obviously, the healthcare field needs more, needs to be prioritized on that list. We should definitely be giving our healthcare workers, let them, have them have a break. You know, they need more, they need more equipment. They need more ventilators. They need more beds. They need more PPE. We need to get our healthcare workers what they need first, and then distribute that money smarter out throughout the community onto a basis of who needs what first, and prioritize that and distribute it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
All right. We're actually going to pivot to one of our Facebook Live questions that's been posed. It says, "We have a splendid comprehensive plan, the Tall City Tomorrow Plan. Why not follow it?" We'll begin with you, Ms. Poole.
I think that we should try to stick to that plan as best as possible. However, being a growing community, I think we also have to be able to take time to reevaluate that plan and see if there are changes that need to be made. I think that we can do ourselves a disservice if we get too ingrained in the way things should be. There always has to be room for, for us to take a step back and bring up questions that might bring forth different ideas and ways of addressing things.
Mr. Tros?
Would you repeat that? You're saying that, please, repeat, the Tall City Tomorrow Plan. Well, we also have the, 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 the TOSLIS Tomorrow Plan is encased in the plan that we've established over the years. Millions of dollars were, and a lot of public input was spent on. I agree with Ms. Poole that we need to take a good look at it and reevaluate it, but we must remember that this wasn't solely a city council decision or a staff decision. The citizens had a great deal of input in this. So we need to be sure that when we move away from that plan, that what we're doing is, is with the citizens okay. And, and I think that what's happened, this will directly address the Nueva Vista issue, which that particular location, the acreage, is definitely in the Tall City Tomorrow Plan, and it says that it should be an open or green space. And that's, that's throughout. It's been identified as a possible wetlands because of the amount of drainage water that collects in there. So these are the kind of things that I don't think we should abandon because it's today we want to do that. We should get all public input saying, yeah, that's, I think it's okay. Thank you.
I'd like to rebut that since he brought up my name.
I did.
And what I said.
Okay, you have 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. I understand that we had public consensus when that plan was first developed, but our community has changed drastically. Our demographics are completely different now. Our population has grown so much. And so I do think that we need to stick to that, but, but the population that created that plan is not the same population that's here. So I think that bringing the new population in and letting them have a say in that is just as important.
May I have a response to that?
There's just one.
Thank you. It's okay. She's correct.
Mr. Corrales?
Plans change sometimes. That's why you have a Plan B, a contingent plan. I think when the Tall City Tomorrow Plan was drafted, they had the best of intentions based on the information at hand. Unlike our constitution, which says what it says, other plans are fluid. So as times change and growth changes, so should our plans. When we look at Nueva Vista, for example, which Councilman Tros mentioned, and what it says in the Tall City Tomorrow Plan, particularly about when you construct homes where there weren't any before, are they of the same quality? Are they of the same nature? Do they look the same? Are they of the same size? Those things in the plan matter. I don't think I've changed those things. But I think some of the things that are not in line with where we're going should. And it's important for us to understand that based on need. The development and the growth, the responsible development, has to be based on the information we have a plan now.
Mr. Johnson?
I would love to. Can we roll? Yes. "We have a splendid comprehensive plan, the Tall City Tomorrow Plan. Why not follow it?"
Okay. Well, like they've said, Midland's grown, and it's definitely a time, things have changed. I think it's time we go back to the citizens, get their input, go around, poll people after, after hours, hold, after our town hall, after, after our town halls, once people get off work. So we can find out what the community wants now, because it's more or less definitely different than what it was when this was put into effect. So we need to go back and revisit that and see what the citizens want to move forward with.
Mr. Robnett?
Tall City Tomorrow Plan, I haven't read it in a while, but I'm going to guess close to 100 pages. Has a lot of different information in that plan. I would encourage the Facebook Live participant maybe to be a little more specific. We can follow up with it later, or somebody can follow up with you offline on the specifics to the vision, I'm sorry, the Tall City Tomorrow Plan. The city's not short on plans. We had a Vision 2020 Plan that I think was crafted in 2000. We have a hike and bike master plan and trails plan. We have a parks master plan. And then, of course, we have the Tall City Tomorrow Plan, which was probably commissioned six or seven years ago, and I believe was finalized five years ago with a lot of input from the community and from the public. But like all plans, especially those that are five or six or seven years old, things change. Things in Midland will continue to change. We have thousands of acres in Midland that are addressed in that plan. Yes, hike and bike trails and parks and green space are addressed in that plan. But I don't think what was contemplated in that plan either was the amount of growth that the city of Midland has seen since that time. So where we grow and how we grow and how we let that plan guide us is very important. But I'll go back to what I continue to say. That plan should be used as a guide, but a guide with a lot of public input and a lot of sitting down with neighbors and talking about changes to that plan. And again, I could address maybe specifics to that question later. But just a guide, just a plan, things change, and we've got to take a look at our city with open eyes, whatever that issue might be, even though we've got a plan that's a little bit dated.
Thank you. I understand the city has plans for ambitious improvements to Hogan Park. The improvements are expected to cost $55 million. $10 million of that allocated by the city, with the rest to be raised from private sources. For, for all of the candidates, do you support the Hogan Park improvements and why or why not? We'll start with Mr. Tros.
Well, yes, supporting $55 million is a heavy burden. I mean, it's a lot of money. It's going to be raised mostly by private enterprise. The city council did a vote, and I, I didn't support it generally because I'm, I'm looking at the $25 million that was allocated to parks that we have had available, and $10 million of that is going into the Hogan Park effort, Hogan Park effort, rather than using all of that money for the 30-plus parks throughout the city, the neighborhood parks that you all attend. I think that we should have taken that money, left it where it is, and utilized it equally among all the parks, of course, parceled out depending on the size and the need for that particular park. But it should be, I, in my opinion, we should take all of that money for local parks, your, your parks in your neighborhoods. I, I think that that's where we should be putting that money.
Thank you. Mr. Corrales?
Look at the Scarborough Sports Complex and what we were able to do. We were able to build that, pay it off, pay it off early. So when we talk about improvements to our parks, do they all have to be public-private partnerships? I agree, it worked for Centennial, but that wasn't city, that wasn't a city park. It was the county courthouse, for those of you that remember. Hogan Park is a public park, and the city controls what they do and how they do it. A public-private partnership means creating a conservancy, which would then oversee the park. So we're taking something that's public now and then changing it. If we can do that, the way we did the Scarborough Sports Complex, by putting it before voters, here's the one thing that you will hear me say repeatedly. Voters' voices matter. That's why we should be out block walking and talking to y'all and hearing back from you. So if we want to make an improvement like that to a park, talk to the people that live around there that use the park. Put those things on a ballot, because I think Midlanders want to say in how the government spends their money.
Thank you. Moving on to Mr. Johnson.
All right. I definitely do not support all that money being dropped into Hogan Park, being just one park, when we have 30-plus more parks throughout the community, and there's many that need work. We've been going around fixing and rebuilding parks all over the community, and they look really nice. But we shouldn't be dropping that much into Hogan Park. We should be going in to the other parks on the south side and east side. There are many in disrepair. We have out at Bill Park, the whole complex, it needs up, the facelift. We do have the brand-new dog park and the brand-new playground. But out there, we have the William and Sam Memorial Skate Park, and it's completely fallen disrepair. There's no shade. There's no seating. It's horrible in the summer. You go out there, 100-plus degrees. And definitely, the city needs to be spending their money for their parks a little bit smarter and look into the parks they've forgotten like that one.
Thank you. Mr. Robnett?
I was told that in the 70s and 80s, when Hogan Park was initially built, it was the pride of West Texas and the pride of Midland, and it was a showplace for tournaments for baseball and softball and soccer and all those great things to be held. The average age of, of average Midlander today is 33 years old. Well, if you're 33, there's a very good chance that you're either starting or in the middle of a young family with kids. And the Hogan Park investment, much like Centennial Park and some other transformational projects in the city of Midland, will be absolutely crucial to the city of Midland as we grow and go forward. I commend some of the fellow council members that came in to counsel in the last few years and saw a city of Midland plan that was 20 or $25 million for renovation, and decided to take that project to a $50 or $55 million renovation. To Mr. Tros' point, there have been 31 out of 36 neighborhood park playgrounds upgraded in the last five years in the city of Midland. So I do think we're addressing neighborhood parks. Only have five to go. Those will be done this year. I could continue on about Hogan Park. It'll be a great public-private partnership. And I think what you should look for, too, is another public entity to make a large contribution, a public-public and private partnership. And I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I have to rebut that with Mr. Robnett. I, I agree with him to a certain degree. However, I would invite you to go visit Rusk Park. That would be a prime example of what's not being done in your neighborhood parks. And I have heard plenty from the neighbors around there about that particular park, which is adjacent to Rusk Elementary School. And there are many parks, and when, when we talk about parks, we're just not talking about playground equipment here. We're talking about the entire, the entirety. We're talking about walkways, where the mother can take her child in the crib if she wants, in the stroller, walk around the park, or throw a picnic in the park. When you throw your, your blankets down, or your children go play in the grass and they're full of stickers. We're not looking at the minutia. What we're doing is taking care of the visual. And what we need to be more careful with in how we invest our dollars is, thank you.
I do believe that quality-of-place initiatives are definitely necessary and needed. I do think that we need to continue to prioritize them, though, and look to what is really at the top of the city's priority list. And I do believe that infrastructure just continues until we're caught up. That's going to continue to be at, at the top of that list. I also think that we need to be good stewards of the parks we have. We do have, as Mr. Tros stated, you know, over 30 neighborhood parks, and it's not just about replacing the playgrounds. It is about the upkeep. And I know that, goodness gracious, the name is, is slipping me, but the, the soccer fields out by Bluebird.
Butler.
Butler Park. Thank you. Recently, whenever the, the kids got out there to play their, their first soccer game of the season, the fields hadn't been mowed. And that's a responsibility of the city to stay on top of that. And I think that we need to be good stewards of what we have before we invest in these large-scale projects. If we're going to invest in the large-scale projects, I think that public-private partnerships are the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move to our closing remarks. I would like to remind our candidates that you have one minute for your closing statements. And we will start with you, Ms. Poole.
Thank you. I want to say thank you again to PBS for having us tonight. This is a great resource for voters to look to. I am just really excited to be running again, and I genuinely love this city. I've lived here pretty much my entire life, and I think that the story that surrounds our city is so important. I mentioned oral tradition before, and it's absolutely necessary that we create a story surrounding our city that is going to draw people here, but keep them here for generations. And I would just like to ask for your vote. I would be honored to have it, and I would be honored to serve as your council member.
Mr. Tros?
Yes, well, thank you. I would like to just take the time to thank you all for having this forum. It's, it's really good for everybody, I think. I would like to just kind of say what I've done, the accomplishments that I managed in the first, my first term at, at large. We, they adopted, the city council adopted my proposal that identified approximately a million dollars worth of non-property tax revenue. And I've fought to preserve and protect our neighborhoods, like Nueva Vista and, and the, the group there from, from grasslands. And I've been a fierce advocate of the spaceport. Today, businesses at the spaceport are valued at over $2 billion. So the money that we invested in the assets at the spaceport are paying dividends that we never imagined. This helps keep property taxes low. I'm asking to you to reelect me as your at-large city councilman, so we can continue to do these things that are, and seek non-property tax revenues wherever we can. They're out there. We just have to search them out. I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Corrales?
Talk to voters. Find out what the concerns are by going door-to-door. Don't ask them to come to you. Go to where they are. That's important for an elected representative to know. We, the people, we work for we, the people, elected candidates do. So what are your candidates about? For me, it's God, family, and country, having a religious, having that moral, spiritual compass every day. Family. Stand by your spouse. Those values mean a lot. Same with, when you talk about your service and civic duty to your country, you're also talking about your city. Those things matter. So I'm asking for your vote because I stand for those values and I'm willing to earn your vote. I've had people say, why are you running so hard for Midland City Council? Never seen somebody run as hard for, like you have been doing. Isn't that what Midlanders deserve? Shouldn't your elected officials be going to you and talking to you about what your concerns are? And that's why I'm asking for your vote on October 18th. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
All right. Once again, I'm going to ask, ask everybody for their vote. I know the struggles Midlanders experience, because I've experienced them, too. I know how to live on a tight budget, and I respect the taxpayer dollars. I understand having city council meetings at 10:00 AM on Tuesdays means excluding a very large portion of Midlanders. That's why I'm going to commit to hosting events in town, in meetings in the evenings to reach out to my constituents in person. I want to be a man of the community. I want to hear what y'all have to say, what issues y'all have. And I want to be there. If you reach out to me, call, or come to any of my events, I will get on whatever issues you have. I want to represent all of Midland, not just a certain small group. Once again, please vote for me.
Mr. Robnett?
Really grateful for the time today and grateful for all the opponents and candidates in this race. I mean it when I say that this is a great time for everybody to come together and be challenged, and for this community to see what their elected officials have been doing, or where they could have fallen a little bit short. I'm running for reelection today for a really very simple reason. It's the same reason I ran eight years ago and lost in my very first election, is because I love this city. I love the people in this city, and I want to make this city better for my family and my kids and my grandkids. Midland's a great place, and this town deserves great leaders. And I would very humbly and respectfully ask for your vote again. I believe my record stands for itself. Seven and a half years of consecutive service, $300 million in infrastructure allocated in the last seven years, $45 million into our park system, and $35 million in infrastructure and capital investments in our police and fire department. That includes pay raises and cost of living increases every year for police and firefighters. So again, thanks for the opportunity. I appreciate it very much. Best luck to everybody in the race, and would finally just respectfully ask for your vote one more time. Thank you.
Thank you all so much, candidates, for being with us tonight. With that, we will conclude tonight's debate, and thank you for joining us. Be sure to vote. Early voting begins on Monday, October 18th. Basin PBS is grateful for your viewer support, which enables us to bring you programs like this one. If you'd like to become a member, please visit basinPBS.org for all of the details. We would also like to thank those students who came tonight and asked questions. I'm Becky Ferguson. On behalf of Basin PBS, my co-moderator, Pat Canty, and League of Women Voters President, Emily Holiva, VAST Signs, and our sponsor, All American Sh... Emily Holiva, vast signs, and our sponsor, All American Chevy of Midland. Thank you and good night.